All right, everybody. If we could get everybody's attention. Kristen. All right, thank you, everybody. It is 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person in consideration of ongoing COVID-19 health concerns, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emily, can you please call the roll?
Boltinghouse.
Davis.
Here.
Josie.
Here.
Inman.
Kring.
Here.
Loudon.
Riherd.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a revised agenda for tonight's meeting. We will be updating the information on the expenditures for the Rock Creek Channel repairs and removing the executive session. I would entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda.
Mayor. Here, I move the city council through the revised June 15th, 2022 agenda as printed.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. Emily, please call for the roll.
Riherd.
Hi.
Thomas. Boltinghouse. Davis.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Inman. Kring.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Motion carries.
First agenda item is public hearings. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will move into our special presentations. We do have several special presentations this evening. Our first presentation is the introduction of several employees from both our police department and the community development department. Major Lane, will you please come up and make your introductions?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. I've got five officers. I'm going to call their names out and I'm just going to do all of them. Have them join me up here and we'll go through all of their backgrounds real quick. So first, I'm going to start with Officer Blake Herford. Blake came to us after working at another Johnson County agency for three years. He's married and just recently this guy had his first child. Officer Tanner McElwain. Officer McElwain grew up in Adrian, Missouri. He attended Longview Community College where he obtained a general degree of arts in 2017. He then went to Missouri State University and graduated in 2019 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a minor in Spanish. He worked for another Johnson County agency for two years prior to starting with us. He likes most outdoor activities and regularly snowboards during the winter. Officer Paige Mason. Officer Mason grew up in Alatha, Kansas. She went to high school at St. Thomas Aquinas where she played softball. She continued her softball career at Wichita State. Officer Patrick Rubino. Officer Rubino grew up in New Haven, Connecticut. He's married, has four children. He was a philosophy major at Southern Connecticut State University, was an officer in both Middlebury and Greenwich, Connecticut. He was also an officer with us some years ago. What year was that? Thank you, sir. He's also a veteran of both the US Army and Marine Corps. Served tours in Iraq and Afghanistan. And last but not least, Officer Brad Judicey. Brant Judicey, I'm sorry. Brant grew up in Lee Summit, graduated high school from Raymore Peculiar, then attended the University of Central Missouri, where he obtained a bachelor's degree. He has worked for several other, two other Johnson County agencies. In his free time, he enjoys competitive shooting, hanging out with his friends and spending time with his family. Also, Brant, you have some family with you tonight? Thank you, guys, for your support.
All right, yeah, thank you and welcome to our new officers. And next we have Brian. Would you please introduce us to our other new employees?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce to you Denisea Carter. She's our neighborhood services officer. Come on up, Denisea. Denisea's been with us for about a month now and so she's getting acclimated to all things that are mission. Although she's not unfamiliar with our community. If she looks kind of familiar, it's where I think I've seen her before somewhere. I don't know where. She works part-time at our Hy-Vee. So she's very familiar with our community and there's a lot of folks here. And I saw that you recognize one of our officers, Officer Beckley, your friend of his.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so that was something of a homecoming for Denisea. So we're glad to have her with us and hope she'll be here for a long time. We also have another employee that started with us about nine months ago and that was Kimberly Stephens. And I invited her to come tonight, but she had previous engagement already. But she's our permit tech in the community development department. So she's sitting at that front desk behind the window. We walked into City Hall. So next time you're in City Hall, be sure to stop by and say hi to Kimberly. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, guys. Our second presentation this evening is from Emily Randall, who will recap the Facility Conservation Improvement Program, which is nearing completion.
Thank you very much for your patience. We wanted, I know that all of you know very well and are very familiar with the work that we've accomplished with the Facility Conservation Improvement Program, but I didn't want the program to conclude without making note of the great collaboration that we've had in the implementation stages of the project. So happy to just summarize, you know, I'll do spoiler alert, but we have, you know, achieved what we hope to achieve. But along the way, we've learned a great deal and made some improvements in our facilities that weren't anticipated as part of that. And I just wanted to publicly thank the team for collaborating with us and all that we've accomplished. So Paul Siggy is here and Amy Nemeth, there they are, from Veragey. And Ellie Blankenship, that you met at the previous iterations and presentations on our project is away, but is in spirit with us. So we wanted to just today, let's see if I can do this from there. Okay. So we're just going to share really fast upgrades in each facility, kind of show you some of the photos. Some of you have probably seen some of that online as we showed it along the way. Just some of those kind of happy surprises that we were able to accomplish in the process of the upgrades and then just refreshing for you all the benefits of what we have done. So again, the project scope included work at this facility, work at the city hall and police building and work at the public works department as well as the replacement of our streetlights to LED. So you can see here, we just wanted to pull out the cost of the improvements, kind of a summary of what we accomplished here. The energy savings, again, operation and maintenance savings and then just that simple payback of costs, you know, over time to show what we've done. I want to pull your attention down to the fifth bullet. The chlorination, chemical controls, all of that work we did in the pool area. Just one of those things, the isolation valves allow for much more precise maintenance. So really just blocking off, you know, like a valve to just work on one piece of the equipment rather than having to shut down the whole system. So that's one of those. Then also no more chlorine storage onsite because we're working, we're creating it through the chlorination machine. So just some of those just safety things that aren't under the scope of the energy savings we wanted to accomplish, but just a lot, you know, just better practices. Once you've upgraded something that's over 20 years old, you just get those benefits. And I really applaud the team for finding those opportunities for us and fixing things when we were, you know, in process of it that were above and beyond. So you see there the environmental benefits again, just to remind kind of the purpose and philosophy behind some of what we did. 679 metric tons of carbon dioxide reduced from this, which is the equivalent of removing 148 cars from the road each year. And that's just at this building. So progress pictures, I know some of you saw some of these, but there's the pool pack with its, in its rested glory. So as Paul says, we got every last bit of useful life out of this thing. So that we can feel good about. It was time to improve. So you see there, we, as you know, we staged it in the cardio area at the Powell Community Center. Big nine boxes, right? The equipment came in nine boxes. We laid the foundations there to have a solid base. And there we go. And then you remember when the crane came and we did the rooftop units? The one you see hanging there is the one that's cooling this building or the rooms we're in right now. So those again, were at the end of their useful life and now Penn, they're functioning correctly. We're several steps ahead already. So there we go. City Hall, again, LED lighting retrofit, just the same HVAC units. We have the, some supply chain issues that we'll talk about, but the reduction there that we're saving still to be done. The Wi-Fi thermostats to be installed and the balancing and, well, the testing and rebalancing of the system. So that's a little bit left to do, but weatherization of the door and window ceilings and the roof to air ceilings have occurred there. Same, Public Works really mimics City Hall, so we'll go into that, but you can see the savings there. Also, I will say the Public Works facility had the type of lights that if like power went out or something, they would take a long time to start up, to warm up again. And now those are instantaneous. They're also the type that can be modified. So it was very tailored to the needs. So the lights in the shop were able to be brighter, work lights and adjustable. So that was again, one of those kind of comfort and usability improvements that we maintained in the project. Citywide, of course, wanted to talk about the LED streetlights. You've all seen those in place and understand what that meant for us in terms of energy savings, decorative fixtures. We were really happy with the contractor that we already had a relationship with, who collaborated with us on that part and was pretty seamless, although we did have some supply chain delays on some of that, but worked through it again. Pictures, just really to try to illustrate some of this. For example, like a fire damper didn't have ready access. So it was difficult to inspect and needed in fact to be replaced. So that was here at this building. Now we have an access door installed, so we can be doing those regular inspections and making sure that we've improved that safety. We have, the lobby area suffers from cold in the wintertime and those unit heaters, that was not in the original scope, if I'm correct. And they looked at solutions for that area of the building and repaired the unit heaters. So that level of comfort in the lobby here at this building is greatly improved. Exhaust fans here at this building keeps the whole building fresher and just better airflow. And then when we were replacing some of the leaks in the pool area, there was this opportunity to upgrade to a speed control fan for the lazy river, which just gives the operation of that a lot more flexibility and saves the, it conserves the useful life of the speed control because you're not doing this grinding hard to start and stop. So things I never thought about, but just really much, much improved. So I did just want to say the supply chains, the labor shortages, all of the things. We did this project in the middle of all of what you've been hearing in the news. So things like when we work with a contractor, you assume that they'll have the staff. They had to pull and pull and manage and juggle a lot of that. And parts of the project were shuffled and leapfrogged to accommodate for all of that. And still were, you know, but for a few small elements, we're pretty on track. And so I just really wanted to applaud Paul, who is onsite at all times, but the whole Veragey team and then also Craig Donner, our facilities manager here in Penn, who are managing all of that on a probably hour to hour some of the time, but definitely week to week basis to keep us on track. And just a few of the graphs, you'll see more of this. Of course, we're still getting our dashboard up and running and our staff trained on the management of the energy. But you can see that green line is the 2022 usage to date. So we're just really already showing some really strong improvements there as anticipated, but it's nice to see it on the graph. And these are, you know, we'll be tracking that. We can report out more of that data as we, as we really live with the system. And therefore, city hall and police department and public works, same story. And this is even before all of the rebalancing has occurred. So we're not even achieving optimal results and savings so far. And then finally, just a review of what we're accomplishing with the total metric tons of carbon dioxide saved. 203 cars off the road each year for this work that we've done. And then of course, you know, the savings that we've accomplished with rescuing equipment that was nearly dead. So that's all I've had. If there's any questions?
Great. Any questions for Emily? Yeah, Ken?
No questions. I just want to congratulate everybody for the work that you did and thank you very much. And Penn, thank you for all the work that your staff did during this very difficult period. So thank you very much.
All right, next on our agenda, I am proud to proclaim June 2022 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Mission. We are a community that respects and actively welcomes and protects all those who reside, visit or do business in our community. Recognizing and celebrating our diversity helps to build a community that promotes harmony and mutual respect. Pride Month celebrations take place across the country every June to commemorate the Stonewall riots of 1969 and to recognize the impact that LGBTQ plus people have had on history, locally, nationally, nationally and internationally. I urge all Mission residents to join with me and the entire city council in working to ensure that everyone has the confidence to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence and hatred based on gender identity and sexual orientation. So we have a proclamation for Pride Month. Our final presentation tonight is a proclamation recognizing June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and June 15th, 2022 as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Mission. As a proud supporter and advocate for the Communities for All Ages program, we regularly look for ways to treat older adults with respect and dignity, enabling them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers and vital participating members of our community. Elder abuse, neglect and exploitation of our seniors is a serious public concern and it is important to take action to raise awareness in our efforts to prevent abuse of older adults and to engage and empower seniors. I encourage you to join with me in honoring and celebrating older adults and their ongoing contributions, the success and vitality of our city.
Thank you.
Next, we have issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes or bonds on our agenda this evening, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda tonight has two items. Our council committee has met on June 1st and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agree that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the, nope. Mayor, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed. Items 4A through 4B.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. Emily, please call the roll.
Davis.
Hi.
Riherd.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Thomas.
Hi.
Inman.
Hi.
Kring.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Boltinghouse. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next, we move into public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not included in, on tonight's agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any public comments on items that are not on our agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move into our action items. We do have one item tonight coming forward from our planning commission, which is consideration of rezoning for four parcels at the southwest corner of 58th and Null. An approval of a preliminary development plan for a three-story, 77-unit multifamily residential development at the same location. Brian, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, this was heard by the planning commission at their May 23rd meeting. There was two components to that. A rezoning of four parcels of property at the southwest corner of 58th Street and Null Avenue. Then a preliminary development plan for the construction of a 77-unit, three-story apartment building on that site. So both those were heard by the planning commission that night. There was a public hearing held with both of those items. We had about 20 residents here, probably about seven or so actually spoke. And I think the minutes should be included in your package. I got a copy of those. Tonight, we have with us the applicant, John Moffett, Jr. I've asked him to give a very brief presentation, kind of high level. And then we'll follow up with the staff report from our planner, Carrie Canneller. John? Good evening, Council. Thanks for having us here. This is our lead architect.
Patrick Reuter with Clover Architects.
And we're excited to be here tonight. Thank you for your time. As Brian just mentioned, we did receive approval from the planning commission to take this from an office site to a residential site. Just a little background about me, I've been doing this my whole life. Got a double major in real estate and construction management from the University of Denver. And what's got me very excited about this is, is I was going over all of this a little while back, this little report came out. And I'm sure most of you, I'm sure all of you are familiar with this report. And I serve, I'm a life director for the Kansas City Home Builders Association and the National Association of Home Builders. And I actually pay attention to these things and I look at it. And I remember seeing this and kind of going through it and thinking, you know, that's nice. That's, that's good. That's kind of altruistic. It might happen. You got to have the right site. You got to have the right place. Johnson County is just kind of on this roll generally about single-family houses way out south. Well, here we are tonight with our team. And you should be proud because you have great staff. We've got a development here that is going to check every single box in this report. I think you'll be the first city that's, that's done something like this. And that's, that's just awesome. We're going to take, if you read this, it talks about transition from, you know, in our case, Johnson Drive to single-family residential. And there is none. It's Johnson Drive, a gas station, offices and then houses, just like that. And the whole purpose of this talks about the missing middle and that's what we're going to provide. So we're going to show you tonight is the missing middle. And, and I'm just very excited about, about that. So with that.
Could you name the report that you're holding up too? Just so we make sure we have it in our minutes?
I'm sorry, it's the, how's that a little better? It's the Johnson County Housing Study.
Great.
Came out a few years back. It's for the community. And they did every city in the county. And if you're, it's about 100 or 200 pages and it's very, very thorough and it makes total sense. And so what we're going to show you here real quick makes total sense. So shall we flip through this? Do you want to leave? There you go. Thank you. Okay. And most everything here is either from Mark or this housing study that we're going to refer to. And we all know the challenge is the lack of attainable housing within the community. Okay? And that's market raised housing. The second bullet talks about the median rent for Johnson County was $884. The third one says, most people can't afford it. All right? And that's what this is going to do. This is going to give you a transition from the high-density commercial into the single-family residential and provide attainable housing. Next one. As we all know, the population growing, you're in the city here, Mission, it's going to grow by over 1% according to Mark. And to accommodate that population growth, there's, needs to be more construction. According to Mark, the next few bullets there, which I thought interesting, for scale, the average annual construction rate mission from 10 to 19 was 1.4 units with a high of 3 in 2019. Now I think they're accepting the local, which is right in back of us. But in general, that's what's been happening here. So there is a demand for housing and there's a demand for attainable housing. And this is going to, going to do that. So might as well go to the next one. Here's the reality. The new household growth from now to 40 will be households without children, single persons and 50% of that growth will be rental housing. Rental housing used to be a stepping stone. Now it's become kind of a lifestyle. And those preferences, 50% of the people would prefer to be able to walk to work or shops and only 10% live in neighborhoods where that's possible. So what's very exciting, you should be very excited about, is we're going to, we're going to hit all those buttons, we're going to check all those boxes. I'll let you kind of run this.
Perfect. So as John mentioned, this is kind of a large overview of our site. Just kind of aerial zoomed out here. You can see the Johnson Drive corridor, which we are within. We're within a quarter mile of the transit facility in terms of walkability. Zooming, zooming in on our site here, we're proposing the DND downtown neighborhood district zoning. Staff does a great job of illustrating kind of all the surrounding zoning districts that are here today, existing MS2 and PBP zoning. But some of our parcels are zoned that today. And then the surrounding on the east, west and south of us is that same zoning with the single-family residential to the north. To go through our site specifically, this is our project, as they mentioned, 77 units, three-story building. The overall building is a modern farmhouse design. I'll start in which is the southeast or the bottom right corner real quick. That is our leasing office with, you know, mailroom. Then there's units that front both 58th and Null. The ground floor levels have walkout units with the parking all concealed kind of behind the building with a combination of surface stalls and then tuck-under parking. What you're seeing on the plan there on that is those individual tuck-under garages. Between the two buildings, we have a dog park. And then the smaller building on the top left has an enclosed trash and center. In the inside corner of the larger building, there's also a fitness and club facility. So this is, we have a few quick renderings to show you. The first one is from that southeast corner. So looking northwest at the leasing office and main entry, this is what you'll see as you're driving north along Null. Overall material-wise, as I mentioned, it is a modern farmhouse. So you know, the overall design utilizes sloped roof, residential-type materials to provide compatibility to the surrounding homes and neighborhoods such as brick and siding as well as a few painted wood elements as well. And then residential shingle roof. This is the northeast corner of the building. Again, very similar design. The design is, as always, foresighted architecture and continues throughout the entire development. So as John previously mentioned, we're providing that transition from the, you know, Johnson Drive, where you can have, you know, those five or six-story buildings kind of down towards you when you get to the residential to provide that, you know, comparability of scale. So next to us, to the west of our site is also similar scale buildings, two and a half and three-story apartments just to the west. Our overall building height, we did amend slightly from the planning commission, just so you all know, there was a slight misunderstanding with the roof heights. So we did actually lower the overall height of the building. So it is within that maximum allowed. Just for the context images, we did a few quick Photoshop renders on Google Earth images on the street views. So this is from the corner, both of these will be from the corner of 58th and Null. This one looking west with the existing single-family homes to the right, just the north of our project. They set up a little bit higher in terms of grade. So there, we're only about a half a story to a story to the top of our roof taller than those homes. This is the view looking to the south. The, again, the neighboring buildings to the left in this image are actually the MS2 office buildings. And so again, I think we have a pretty good buffer here with the streetscape and then also their large front yards and the trees. One thing I wanted to note as well on the site is we do have a few parallel parking stalls proposed out along Null for visitor use as also, you know, residents in the evenings but also for that leasing office. So we can get those cars off the street. So you're not having to park on the street to visit the site. And I think John pretty much hit the missing middle piece in the beginning of the presentation. So I'll skip through that one. We mentioned walkability a little bit briefly earlier. As we noted, we are within a quarter mile of the transit center. And then also just being within that Johnson Drive corridor, there's obviously a lot of businesses existing today that provides walkability for residents. So you don't always have to use your car. Some of the socioeconomic benefits is all the cost savings individuals to the public for all the transport, increased efficiency of land use. What's there today is a few vacant office buildings. So with us, obviously, there become, there's now more economic development and benefits. 58th and Null is a new housing type, which will serve a new type of resident, which as John mentioned, the missing middle. So these are your market rate standard apartments that the average resident can afford.
And most importantly, those residents will engage in the community. They'll come to the farmer's markets. They, they will use the transit area. They'll, they'll be using this facility. So we're going to take an office site that is just people that come and go and have no ownership of the neighborhood. And we're going to create a community within a community that will use all the services, all the shops, everything up and down Johnson Drive. And you'll have 77 people who are engaged.
And then last. And then lastly, I will not go through all of these. I know it's a lot, but we are pursuing, pursuing several sustainable objectives with this project, such as bicycle storage within the building, providing charging stations for electric vehicles, water metering, native plantings, et cetera. So we are working with the sustainability commission on that. And with that, we would be open to answering any questions. Otherwise, we're happy to turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Thank you so much. We might be, or, yeah, sorry, we'll, we'll just do one for them specifically. Okay.
I was just going to ask about the little dog park. And everyone up here knows I love dog parks, but I'm not crazy about that location as it relates to the residents across the street. Did you all explore any other locations for that little dog park on the site? Like perhaps in the back corner that's closer to office buildings? I know that would change the parking lot, but I'm just wondering if there were any other options.
Well, you hit the nail on the head because when we did that, we looked at a couple, but to get the flow. And if you notice, our, our parking is all set up to, to exit mainly on Noll as far south. So, so that we, because several of the residents at our development meeting asked about traffic and the greater traffic. So when they go, go to leave, we got it down here, which is here. So it ended up logically that was going to be our plus that green space to those houses north of its off fifty-eight.
And to expand on that, we did look at the different locations as John mentioned. And one of the constraints of the site to get the units on here is the parking count. Right now, we are at the minimum amount of parking and there's not a lot of room on the street to add parallel stalls. And still, in our opinion, get a good streetscape where you do have that, you know, sidewalk, green space and buffer to the building. So, you know, I think it is possible if we could lose a few more stalls, but we're already parked. I think it's at one point one five stalls per unit, which is kind of at the lower end of what we see these projects typically stabilize at.
I mean, I'll be curious what the planning commission thinks when you come back with your final plan, but that's just my feedback. I would explore that more. I would take, I would, I would alternate, but that's me.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, if, if council has any other questions specifically for the developer, we'll address those and then we'll go to public comment and council discussion. Yeah, Leah.
The parallel spaces were added at the original time of the supplemental.
Okay, I guess I just didn't notice them. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right, yeah, Ken?
Do you want to motion and then have a discussion?
No, we're going to do public comment first, see if we have public comment, and then we'll move into a council motion discussion. But yeah, a staff report as well. Yeah. Maybe we'll see. Okay. Okay. Wait for Emily to get the slides up. I want you to have something to look at besides me while we're going through this. These are actually two cases, case twenty-two twelve and case twenty-two thirteen following case twenty-two twelve is the rezoning. I'm going to be going over the fourteen points in the code that apply to this rezoning effort here. Particularly, we're focused a little bit on the first seven, because those are what came out of the case that I'll discuss here, the Kansas Supreme Court in Overland Park had a case and seven points in criteria for rezoning were developed out of that case. So I'm going to focus on those and do due diligence on those and then sum up the rest of the, the seven. There's fourteen total. Okay. So this is case twenty-two twelve, application for the rezoning of certain properties located at the southwest corner of fifty-eighth Street and Noll Avenue. The quest, request is approval of a rezoning from PBP and MS two to D and D. The planning commission did recommend approval to the city council by a vote of seven to zero at their May twenty-third meeting. The applicant Moffett Development Company, Inc. submitted the preliminary development plan for a seventy-seven unit multifamily development for property located generally at eighty-fifth and Noll, fifty-eighth and Noll. The preliminary development plan will be heard in case twenty-two thirteen. And staff requested at that time that the applicant also apply for rezoning to align the development with the city zoning code for the lot, for lot area height and setback. So these are the fourteen criteria, the golden rules of rezoning. In the case of Golden versus the city of Overland Park in nineteen seventy-eight, the Kansas Supreme Court provided a set of fourteen criteria. I'm sorry, it was seven criteria. Sorry, six criteria. And our code adds eight more, sorry, yes, eight more. Now I'm doing math here. Eight more to our, our zoning code. And these criteria have become the legal standard for evaluating rezoning matters and is cited in section four forty, one forty of our, of our municipal code. The first seven, which I'll go through more diligently, apply to rezoning cases in general. And the last seven apply specifically to the use that is proposed in conjunction with the rezone. The first of these criteria is the character of the neighborhood. Fifty-eighth Street is a divider between residentially zoned properties to the north and commercial and retail zoned properties to the south. The properties to the north are zoned R one, single family, with the exception of a few properties along Outlook, Outlet Street that are zoned are for garden apartments. Properties south of fifty-eighth Street are a mix of PBP, Planned Business Park District and MS two Main Street District two. The properties owned PBP are primarily owned by Script Pro and intended to be part of a campus environment for that company. Properties are zoned MS two are intended to complement retail and commercial activity along Johnson Drive, which is one block to the south and adjacent to the MS one district. Criteria number two is the zoning and uses of nearby properties and the extent to which the proposed use would be in harmony with such zoning and uses. The D and T, the downtown neighborhood district at section four ten to seventy of the Mission Municipal Code intends to encourage private and public investment in neighborhoods surrounding the commercial core of downtown Mission. The intent is to offer a unique living environment that offers a variety of housing styles that supports downtown businesses and acts to stabilize the surrounding single family neighborhoods. The Johnson Drive Commercial Corridor is a half block south of the proposed rezoning. Properties along Johnson Drive are zoned MS one, which is intended to support retail and commercial activity. And properties north of the proposed rezoning, both in Mission and in Rollin Park are zoned R one, which is intended to support single family homes. The D and D zone is an ideally suited transition between these two uses. The residential context of D and D zoning will support the residential areas to the north by providing less activity, less traffic and less noise than may normally be associated with commercially zoned properties. And the residential context of this zoning will also support the commercial activity to the south by providing more population within the downtown corridor that will support shops and businesses. The D and D zoning regulations within the downtown corridor that will support, I'm sorry, the D and D zoning regulations permit the missing middle, as you've heard before. Housing typology that is needed to support other surrounding zoning and land uses and is entirely appropriate for the surrounding zoning districts and land uses. Great. Period three is the suitability of the property for the uses to which it has been restricted under the applicable zoning district regulations. The parcel zoned MS two was a former medical clinic and has been vacant for approximately a year and a half. The parcel is three quarters of an acre with a one-story building that is just under nine thousand square feet. And a clinic is a specialized use with limited market of buyers. Other uses permitted under MS two zone would be commercial or retail with some component of permitted residential. The structure and/or the property would require extensive renovation to be financially viable. And adaptive reuse is highly unlikely due to the square footage of this property. The other three parcels are zoned PBP, which limits use to office or light industrial. Residential uses would also be permitted in PBP under the Euclidian zone. All three parcels are owned by Script Pro and have been converted from residential to office uses. The properties have been vacant for the past two years as a result of COVID nineteen pandemic. And Script Pro, Pro now allows its employees to work from home or other remote locations. And as with the medical clinic, the reuse of these properties is limited, given the type of structure, limitations on zoning and parcel size. Of the three existing structures, the newest is nearly sixty years old. And due to their age, design, limited use under current zoning and relatively high appraisal value, potential reuse is unlikely. Criteria four is the extent to which approval of the application would detrimentally affect nearby properties. The current zoning for the subject properties could have a detrimental effect on the surrounding area. Because of the point stated in item three concerning the limited use of the building's age and value, the chance that these properties will remain vacant is high. The result is potential further decay of the building's neighborhood blight and eventually vandalism. The proposed D and D zoning would allow the properties to be utilized in a manner that is supportive of the surrounding neighborhoods and businesses. The application will reduce the potential for detrimental, detrimental effect because of the proposed zoning. It will likely have less noise and traffic for its permitted uses. Criteria five is the length of time the property has remained vacant is owned. As I stated, the property has been vacant for about a year to two years. Criteria six is the relative benefit to public health, safety and welfare by retaining applicable restrictions on the property as compared to the destruction of the value of the property or hardship to the owner associated with denying its request. As again referenced in item three is the suitability for the uses. The existing properties are underutilized currently. The age of the structures, the value and the limited uses permitted under the current zoning do not permit the highest and best potential use. These properties as zoned are a detriment to the current owner and surrounding property owners if they remain vacant. The situation would persist if the request to rezone to D and D is not approved. Criteria seven is part of our code and that's conformance with the comprehensive plan. This, the plan that was adopted in two thousand and seven identified this area as mixed use, medium density. And the updated comprehensive plan, which is in final form, final draft form identifies this area as office and mixed use downtown. Mixed use downtown would include multifamily housing as proposed with this development. The office designation reflects the current use of the medical clinic. Because the plan update and is in draft form, these designations are not finalized yet. So the previous seven criteria apply to general rezoning consideration and could actually stand alone as applicable to this rezoning request to D and D for the reasons listed in the analysis. Criteria eight through fourteen pertain more to the proposed multifamily residential use that will be heard in the next case. But because the preliminary development plan is included today, the following criteria are worth noting. So I'll just kind of quickly go through those. Criteria eight is the extent to which the proposed use would adversely affect the capacity or safety of that portion of the road network influenced by the use or present parking problems in the vicinity of the property. I'll get in that into that with the traffic study. I'm going to skip criteria nine as staff recommendation and come back to that in a moment. Criteria ten is the extent to which utilities and services, including but not limited to sewers, water service, police and fire protection, parks and recreation facilities are available and adequate to serve the proposed use. Eleven is the extent to which the proposed use would create excessive stormwater runoff, air pollution, water pollution, noise pollution or other environmental harm. Criteria twelve is the extent to which there is a need for the use in the community. Criteria three, the economic impact of the proposed use on the community. Criteria fourteen, the ability of the applicant to satisfy any requirements applicable to the specific use imposed pursuant to the rezoning district regulations. And the recommendation and criteria nine that I skipped is of the professional staff. City of Mission Planning Staff believes that the requested rezoning to D and D is appropriate for the proposed use according to all fourteen criteria. And will be in harmony with the surrounding zoning and land uses. The planning commission recommends that the city council approve the request for rezoning in case twenty-two twelve. That's all I have for that case. Any questions on the rezoning for Carrie? Do you want to continue with the other case and then we can check for comments? Is it ready? Can you click it forward? There we go. Case twenty-two thirteen. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Now I'm doing it too. Hold on. I gotcha. Okay. Case twenty-two. Okay, is this the right one? Yeah, twenty-two thirteen. The application for preliminary development plan at the southwest corner of fifty-eighth Street and Noll Avenue. The request is, is the approval of a preliminary development, development plan for the Noll fifty-eight multifamily residential project. The proposed development is a three-story. There's the site is a three-story seventy-seven unit multifamily project consisting of two buildings with a small green space on the north, fronting fifty-eighth Street. The planning commission did recommend approval to the city council by a vote of six to one at their May twenty-third meeting. The applicant identified the following criteria for choosing the location and housing type to accommodate missing middle housing, to support the downtown commercial corridor and promote economic development, to provide a solution to the demand for walkable neighborhoods, to respond to the regional demand for quality multifamily rental housing in proximity to regional downtown areas and job opportunities, to diversify choices of housing types and to prevent crime associated with vacancy and blight due to long-term vacancy. Let's see. I was going to go through the zoning real quick to just the surrounding zoning. You've heard this before, but let's just reiterate. To the west, we, we have MS two and PBP zones. Land uses are garden apartments, a vacant undeveloped parcel and parking. To the east is MS two and PBP, a single family rental, medical dental office that is vacant and parking exists to the east. To the north is R one, single family residences. And to the south is MS two, PBP and MS one, which consists of parking, vacant undeveloped land, medical dental office, a gas station and convenience store and a car wash. Okay, so the site is served by a water main indicated here. And with the blue lines, one of the blue lines runs straight down the middle of the property that is proposed here. That I think is part of the reason that the dog park exists where it does as green space for the easement located there. The water main runs east and west also and in the right away behind the curb. Stormwater generally drains northwest to southeast and there are no existing stormwater systems on the site. Stormwater inlets on Noll capture runoff. And existing impervious areas approximately forty-six thousand two hundred square feet. Existing pervious area is approximately thirty thousand square feet. And the property is also served by underground electrical and gas utilities. The intent of D and D zoning is to encourage private and public investment, a unique living environment and a variety of housing styles that support downtown businesses and stabilize single family neighborhoods. Multifamily structures are permitted with a maximum height of three stories or forty-five feet. Front setback should be a minimum of ten feet and side setback should be a minimum of six feet to adjacent, if adjacent to residential zones. The rear setback is twenty-five feet and there's no requirement regarding lot width, depth or area. The proposed site design satisfies these code requirements. The proposal specifies ninety-one total parking spaces, the minimum required by code of the seventy-seven units. Ten are studios, fifty are one-bedroom units, three are one-bedroom with a den. These units require a total of sixty-three parking spaces. And then there are fourteen units which have two bedrooms, which require another twenty-eight parking spaces. Two parking stalls are ADA compliant per municipal code. And parking within the lots interior would consist of tuck under stalls as well as surface parking. An additional eight on-street parking stalls are specified on the property along Noll Avenue that you saw earlier. Landscaping is regulated in the municipal code at sections four fifteen sixty, four fifteen ninety and four fifteen one-ten. The sections, sections of the code require designation on the site plan of large trees that will be removed prior to construction. Required trees on street frontage every fifty feet and one tree for every twenty cars and parking areas, as well as six percent of the parking lots to be landscaped. The parking area will be nine percent landscaped with approximately seven trees and landscaped islands within surface parking. Trees are spaced about every thirty-five to forty feet along fifty-eighth Street and an average of fifty feet along Noll. The proposal has met or exceeded the requirements set forth in the municipal code in this way. The landscape plan also proposes native, non-invasive species of shade trees, ornamental trees and grasses, deciduous and evergreen shrubs, green space for a small dog park between the two buildings and rock hardscaping as a comprehensive landscape improvement to soften the edges of the property and provide a buffer. The site currently does not have sidewalk connections on fifty-eighth Street or on Maple. And the applicant proposes a five-foot sidewalk on the perimeter of the entire site with ADA ramps at corners for universal access. These pedestrian connections satisfy code requirements and staff recommendations. On behalf of the developer, George Butler Associates performed a trip generation analysis. On behalf of the developer, George Butler Associates performed a trip generation analysis for the existing office development compared with the proposed development. The existing land use is estimated to generate about forty total trips during the morning peak hour and approximately forty eight total trips during the evening peak hour. Proposed development is estimated to generate approximately forty seven total trips in the morning peak and forty five total trips during the evening peak. Based on this analysis, there is a seven vehicle trip increase in the morning during the peak hour and an increase of six vehicle trips in the evening peak hour. GBA anticipates that the adjacent roadways such as Johnson Drive and Noll Avenue can serve this additional traffic volume. GBA also performed a stormwater study for the subject property and concluded that the existing drainage patterns would remain largely consistent under the proposed conditions. The proposed retention basin in the lower south, the southeast corner meets or exceeds the stormwater. See if I can help bring that up. Okay, this detention basin, oh, you can't really see it because of the screen, but you can kind of see a detention basin there down to the very lower corner. It's actually the southwest corner of the property and draining out to the inlet on Noll. The proposed retention basin meets or exceeds the stormwater management court requirements according to GBA and the stormwater management plan will reduce the risk of flooding flooding for properties downstream as well. So finally, the proposal conforms with the two thousand and seven comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan update and the Johnson Drive design guidelines. The proposal also promotes goals listed in the adopted climate action casey plan and professional recommendations of engineers and the public works director. The proposed multifamily project provides additional residential density in the downtown commercial corridor that can help provide economic support to local businesses and buffers the existing residential neighborhood from higher intensity commercial activity. The development will help prevent crime and blight associated with vacancy while boosting property values for residents, residences and businesses alike. Mr. Moffett and his team are scheduled to meet with the sustainability commission on July eleventh to discuss measures to increase the environmental sustainability of this project as well. And the planning commission recommended to the city council that they approve the preliminary development plan for case twenty two thirteen with one condition. The traffic that traffic calming measures should be evaluated at fifty eighth and Noll once the project has been completed. If you have any questions, I can answer questions or we can bring up Moffett development as well to answer additional questions.
Questions for Carrie? Yeah, Ken?
I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Leah's question about the notched end parking on Noll. The sidewalk there, at least the drawing seems that it's a pretty sharp turn for pedestrians or runners or anybody that's using that sidewalk. And then I believe it narrows the sidewalk in that section. Are there any accommodations accommodations that can be made with regards to the contour of that sidewalk? So that it's not as sharp of a
This is really hard to see on this site plan.
You can see it more in the picture.
Oh, you want to see the picture?
Northeast render?
Yeah, the northeast rendering there.
I don't have that pulled up, actually. I just
There it is.
Oh, this one. Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
And then if you look back from the other side, maybe it's just the way it's drawn, but I'd appreciate it if the builder could maybe comment to that effect.
And just to clarify or piggyback on that, the sidewalk does remain five feet all the way around. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, the five foot sidewalk does remain same width. So on this rendering here, to answer your question directly, I think there is ways we can soften those transitions on this southeast corner here. We did actually, you can kind of see a little bit, there's actually a larger plaza area here, so there is actually a little bit more room on this corner specifically to, you know, if you are running to make that turn, it's not like a five foot turn. On the northeast portion, I think we can definitely look when we come back for file development plan, softening that and doing a curve and getting some green space in there, so it's not
Yeah, I saw that at the at the corner, you had softened it and had a little island of grass in between. And so maybe something to that effect that it's not as sharp at that location.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions of staff or the developer? Right, thank you. Seeing none at this time, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? As a reminder, if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. Emily, do we have any comments or questions? None online? Do we have any members of the audience who would like to comment on this project? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to open it up for council discussion. Yes, Ben?
Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance upholding the recommendations of the planning commission to rezone four parcels of property at the southwest corner of fifty eighth street and Noll Avenue from MS one and P B P to D and D and approving the preliminary development plan for a three story seventy seven unit multifamily residential development on second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion? Yes, Debbie?
Okay. I want to thank Mr. Moffett. Your design is great. I've gone out and looked at several of the things that you put together and it looks really nice. I wish you would have been here a couple of years ago to do some of the other things that are not so nice. I'm going to make a statement for the record and I hope the council just respects the position I'm in because I'll respect you. I'm not going to win here and I don't expect to, but I have to make this comment. Currently, there are two thousand five hundred and ninety nine apartment units in the city of Mission, not including the senior housing units, which total one hundred and fifty six. These are units, not the total number of people, that could and would be substantially more. With the request currently on the table, we would be adding eight hundred and eighty nine additional units to the total, giving us a citywide total of three thousand four hundred and eighty eight apartment units within a two and a half square mile territory. While a comprehensive plan developed some years ago asked us to look at a variety of factors, including density and land use, it does not take into account how many additional people this would be adding to our roads and the need for additional police and fire responders, not to mention the toll on our current residents, city staff and the potential at the community center. This would be adding almost a third of our current population just in units, not total of people, that would be more. I respect the developer and have looked at several of his renderings and they look wonderful. And I respect his right to develop apartments or any other development that meets our zoning codes and requirements. However, as a council member, I have to look at the bigger picture of a sustainable mission and our sustainable economic development criteria and respects our and respect our current residents, businesses and current apartment residents. I have to use a reasonable approach to approve this project. Therefore, I will be voting no. Focus should be on sustainable economic development and diversity of housing. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments from council? Yes, Hillary?
Thank you. With respect to Councilmember Crane, I think redevelopment and change is never easy. And I think this is one of those circumstances and in seeing something new and fresh for the neighborhood, we might be feeling like we're taking a little bit of a risk in doing that, but I think the potential for reward, especially as we look at that vibrant downtown district that we've been so desperately wanting and talking about for so long, we need people down there. We we need people to support our businesses. So I'm very supportive of this project. It conforms with every single one of our plans, all of our guidelines as well as all the zoning requirements. There's no deviations from the new zoning code. Beyond that, you know, and as Mr. Moffett referenced, the the need for housing in Johnson County is well documented. And this is, I think, a worthy addition to the existing housing stock and I will continue to really turn my attention to the existing housing stock we have and the needs for improvements in those rather than be worried about new apartments because I look forward to the new residents that will soon be living there and adding to our tax base. Finally, I would just like to ask the developer to, I didn't expect the dog park thing, but to reconsider reconsider the dog park location for the for the neighbors there on the north, but also I look forward to seeing what you have for the sustainability commission and encourage you to 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 push whatever it is that you're able to bring as far as you can, particularly in relation to EV stations, et cetera. Because I think you'll have a handful of EV drivers that will likely be residents there. So thank you for coming. Thank you for the presentation and I will be supporting this project.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, I did just want to make one one further comment about the project to just address some of the comments made. I think it is important that we consider for all development projects, residential and commercial, the impact on our other city services. But one benefit to new development is hopefully an increase in our tax base both through the property and appreciation, the property and the new residents we'll be getting. So I do think it's very important to continue to evaluate our city services and make sure we're keeping up with our growth. But I think that our our tax base and, you know, projected growth to the tax base should allow us to do so. And I think, you know, we already have a large and vibrant rental community in Mission and that we should consider, you know, our renters and our homeowners and any other members coming through our community to be on equal footing and appreciate a quality project like this coming through to give people additional housing options. All right. Seeing no further council discussion, Emily, would you please call the roll? Josie?
Aye.
Boltinghouse? Inman? Crane?
Nay.
Davis?
Aye.
Reherd?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Loudon? Motion carries? All right. Thank you for that. Next, we will move into our committee reports. Oh, just one point of clarity. We only needed one motion for both case numbers, right? Yes, just to clarify. Okay. Thank you for our committee reports. Councilmember Boltinghouse, will you please provide a report from the finance and administration committee?
The finance administration committee met on June first and considered five items. The meeting minutes and an ordinance amending the boundaries for city sponsored special events were approved under the consent agenda. A resolution calling for the special mail ballot election for renewal of the parks and recreation sale tax. Authorization for the Mission Police Department to submit a grant for license plate reader equipment. And a resolution designating city sponsored special events for the remainder of two thousand and twenty two will be considered under the regular agenda. Item seven A is a resolution authorizing a special mail ballot election and approving the ballot language for the renewal of a dedicated parks and recreation sales tax. Mission currently has a three eighths percent citywide retailer sales tax, which is dedicated to the acquisition, construction, equipping, operation, maintenance and debt service for parks and recreational facilities. The sales tax was approved by voters in the November two thousand and twelve general election and it took effect in April two thousand and thirteen. It sunsets in March two thousand and twenty three. Since implementation, the dedicated sales tax has generated approximately seven point seven nine million dollars in revenue, which has been used for replacement of the Mission Family Aquatic Center, deferred maintenance at the Powell Community Center, creation of a parks master plan, maintenance and expansion of the trail network, development of conceptual plans for outdoor park improvements and a start on implementation of some of those improvements. Continued progress for Mission's park system, especially with respect to the outdoor park system, hinge on successful renewal of the parks and recreation sales tax. Through citizen feedback collected through the Direction Finder survey process in two thousand and twenty one, residents continue to express a desire for investment in high quality, well maintained park facilities and popular, well attended recreation and enrichment programs. Over the last eighteen twenty four months, efforts have been focused on building out a plan for continued investment in Mission's parks. And in February, council directed staff to coordinate with the Johnson County Election Office to plan for a mail ballot election to occur on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty two for renewal of the dedicated parks and recreation sales tax. Based on the needs and priorities identified through ongoing review and analysis, the council is seeking renewal of the parks and recreation sales tax at the current rate of three eighths percent for a period of ten years. If approved, the renewed sales tax would take effect on April first, two thousand and twenty three and sunset on March thirty first, two thousand and thirty three. Therefore, mayor, I move city council approve the resolution authorizing and calling a special election for the purpose of submitting the question of imposing a three eighths percent citywide retailer sales tax for the purpose of financing the costs of parks and recreation improvements and related costs.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Laura, I believe you wanted to make some clarifying comments about the ballot language.
I did just want to touch on a couple of things because we updated the packet late this afternoon with a revised version of the ordinance based on some conversations that the mayor and I've had since the packet came out on Friday. And there are some unique, there's some uniqueness to parks and recreation improvements specifically as it relates to the issuance of bonds. So and they operate differently and I think we've talked about it, but it's been several months since we talked about this. But so statutorily, you as a governing body can issue debt for streets for stormwater without going to a vote of the public. Under state statute, unless you have some other provision, park improvements require a vote of the public. So one of the things that we do, if we're writing the ballot language broadly to allow for the opportunity to issue debt at some point and and pledge sales tax revenues to that debt issuance is that we have to calculate sort of what the the upper limits of that that debt issuance might be. And so those calculations were done by Bruce Kimmel, our municipal advisor. And then those are incorporated and are required to be incorporated in the notice and as a part of the consideration of the ballot language. So your packet Friday included some calculations which showed about fifteen million dollars worth of debt issuance. That language was plugged into both the ballot language and then in the notice in a in a way that was different than the way the language was presented in the two thousand and twelve election. So I had the opportunity this, the last several days to visit with Mr. Wempe, who ultimately would Gilmore and Bell as our bond counsel if we were to issue debt, would have to sign off on all of the legality. So we reviewed that and he felt comfortable revising the agenda. I think the mayor's concerns and I can certainly appreciate this is that it it sort of read if you weren't really familiar with all of the conversations that had led up to that, that we would be issued a vote to renew the sales tax would also be a vote to issue fifteen million dollars worth of debt, which is absolutely not the case. So the red line version in the packet simply removes that fifteen million dollar definition or call out in the specific ballot language. The project costs and those calculations are still incorporated as a part of the notice that will be published twice prior to the mail ballot being distributed. But I think this provides some additional clarity and helps us in messaging as we move forward with this. So just as as another point of clarification, so this would then allow by by incorporating this language, though, it it sort of bundles the and provides you with the opportunity at any point to consider debt, a debt issuance for park improvements. And I know there, we've had some conversations about potentially accelerating, looking at accelerating park improvements. So this provides you that flexibility. But it is, there are absolutely additional steps that would have to be taken by the city council before you would ever be able to issue debt in association with this. One of those being the completion of a feasibility study by our financial advisor. And I don't know, Mr. Wempe, if you want to elaborate if I've missed anything, but two or three steps at at whatever point you decide you might want to consider issuing debt before we would ever get to this point. So there's nothing automatic about debt issuance tied to renewal of the of the parks and recreation sales tax. So I'm happy to answer questions and I know that Kevin will as well.
Okay. Any questions for Laura on that piece? Thank you, Laura, and I appreciate you and Kevin working through that piece. I think if we can keep the ballot language simple and clear, that will be good and prevent any, you know, accidental confusion that we are issuing bonds at this time. That would be a discussion for a later day. All right, anything else on this item? Yes, Ken?
I just wanted to reiterate what comments I made during the committee meeting. I am very much in support of the renewal of the tax, but I'm not in support of the renewal of the tax at three-eighths percent of, of the sales tax. And so, and the purpose and the reason for that is that I believe that we should have a level aggregate sales tax. And what this would do is actually increase the aggregate sales tax from what it was before. And so I would recommend a quarter percent sales tax, but I know that there's not sufficient support for that position. And I'm not going to make an amendment at this time, but I am going to vote against the, the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments of council? All right, seeing none. Emily, please call the roll.
Inman.
Aye.
Josie. Davis.
Nay.
Thomas.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Reherd.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 7B is the license plant, license plate reader grant submission. In late 2021, Senator Moran's office contacted Chief Madden regarding possible funding opportunities for law enforcement projects in the city of Mission. Based on previous budget considerations for the department, the chief reached out to a local vendor to discuss preliminary budget numbers for license plate reader technology. Based on the project, the projected cost per camera, crime map data was used to determine potential locations to install this technology. And Chief Madden responded to the senator's office with a request of $140,000 in funding to acquire and install license plate reader technology. Automated license plate reader systems are used in nearly every city across the metropolitan area. These systems allow for real-time investigative uses, which can both prevent crimes or be used to identify potential suspect vehicles if a crime occurs. They provide reliable and unbiased data to law enforcement. The funding request is based on the installation of 21 ALPR cameras and associated equipment. A review of crime data as well as traffic information was used to develop the preferred locations for the cameras. Concentrating cameras in areas with higher traffic volumes, higher incidence of crime, and proximity to entry and exit points to our city can provide officers much-needed, much more information than placing a camera at every intersection. As with any law enforcement technology tool, there will be strict policies related to the use of ALPR data as well as data retention guidelines. The chief expects to bring forward a resolution outlining the anticipated use and data retention guidelines prior to installation or activation of any equipment secured through the grant process. This funding is attached to a grant program through the Community Oriented Police Services Program through the United States Department of Justice, and the grant submission is due before the end of June. Securing grant funding for this purchase relieves the need for the city's general fund to consider a budgetary allocation for this technology. The nature of the congressionally designated spending does not allow the city the opportunity to submit a different request for the use of the allocated funds. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council authorize the Mission Police Department to submit a grant application to the United States Department of Justice in the amount of $140,000 for the acquisition of license plate reader technology.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any council discussion on this item? I did just want to mention that when we were in Washington DC for National League of Cities and were able to speak to Senator Moran and his staff, that he did share with us also at that time that he sits on the subcommittee related to justice on the appropriations committee that he sits on, and really encouraged us to reach out to him for funding needs, in particular in connection with public safety. And so just wanted to say, I really appreciate the outreach of his office to our police department on this and glad we can take advantage of this opportunity. Right? Emily, please call for the roll.
Josie.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Aye.
Reherd.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, item 7C is a resolution designating the 2022 special events. Ordinance number 1172 passed on September 14th, 2005, exempts city-owned or public property from the prohibition of the consumption of alcoholic liquor in connection with city-sponsored festival events. Included in the ordinance is that a requirement that the city council pass a resolution each year designating specific events to be held in that calendar year. Any vendor providing alcohol at approved event is required to obtain temporary and special event license from both the state of Kansas and the city. Vendors are permitted to four temporary or special event permits per calendar year. The common consumption area permit currently in place allows for drinking establishments within the areas participate in events within the district without the need for a waiver. This is the case for each of the Mission Market events in 2022, with the exception of the final date. Hosted by a group that is not a drinking establishment, the Shawnee Mission Rotary Club. That date has been added to the resolution. The attached resolution designates the following as city-sponsored event, festival events for 2022. The Mission Summer Family Picnic at Broadmoor Park from 5:00 to 10:00 PM on Saturday, July 9th, 2022. The Yoga on the Deck Event at the Mission Family Aquatic Center from 7:00 to 10:00 PM Thursday, July 28th, 2022. Mission Market Beer Garden hosted by the Shawnee Mission Rotary Club from 4:30 to 8:00 PM on Thursday, August 25th, 2022. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution designating the 2022 city-sponsored festival events.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Other than fingers crossed for good weather? All right, Emily, will you please call for the roll?
Davis.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Josie. Kring.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Reherd.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Josie, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on June 1st and considered four items. The meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda earlier. The rezoning and preliminary development plan for four parcels at the southwest corner of 58th Street and Null were considered under the Planning Commission items. There is one additional item for consideration on the regular agenda tonight. Item 7D is contract award for Mohawk Park Improvements Phase 1. Mohawk Park is a 7.8 acre neighborhood park located at the northeast corner of Lamar and 67th Street. The former location of Mohawk Elementary School, the site was acquired in the early 2000s by the city and the school was demolished. No major improvements have been made since that time. In 2019, the city began master planning improvements for each of the city's major parks. Improvements to Mohawk Park were a primary focus and a longstanding priority of the Parks, Recreation, and Trees Commission. Through the conceptual planning process, improvements totaling approximately $3.5 million were identified and approved. Based on the size of the investment, a phased approach to construction was necessary. Phase 1 improvements include a shelter with integrated storage facility and restrooms, a new sidewalk connection from the proposed facilities to the existing trails, as well as water fountains, trash, and recycling receptacles, benches, and additional site furnishings. Demolition of the existing park, parking lot and construction of a new parking lot along 67th Street was proposed as a bid alternate if the budget allowed. Phase 2 improvements include expansion of the walking trail around the full perimeter of the site, addition of a half-court basketball goal, playground, playground replacement, including port-in-place playground surfacing and shade sales, and native plantings, including trees. Three bids were received on May 26, 2022, and based on a review and evaluation of the bids, staff recommends approval of a contract with Sands Construction for Mohawk Park Phase 1 improvements, base bid and bid alternate in an amount not to exceed $1,331,290. Construction is anticipated to begin in August 2022 and be completed in February 2023. This project is funded from the 2022 Park System Improvements Budget. The Park and Recreation Sales Tax identified in the Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Plan. Land and Water Conservation Grant Funds in the amount of $394,560 are available for the project. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with Sands Construction for Mohawk Park Improvements Phase 1 in an amount not to exceed $1,331,290.
Second. Right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. Emily, please call for the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Reherd.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Boltinghouse. Kring.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda would be unfinished business, but we do not have any unfinished business items on our agenda this evening. So we'll move into new business. We have one new business item for consideration tonight. And I see Celia walking to the podium, so are you going to give us the update on our Rock Creek situation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know you've heard a lot about this project, but a little recap. In May, we happened to notice the trail started settling. In fact, that was our deputy director that noticed that. And then we went out on site and noticed a large stress fracture, fracture, crack developing behind the wall. We had previously, you know, inspected all our urban channels and GBA inspected it in May. And we knew that it was, you know, starting to fail, but we thought we had more time. But with the rains, it just started to develop overnight. We met with GBA on site and they completed design in June and really looking for, you know, a quick, but, but structurally sound way to get the wall done. And we didn't really have time to design a wall similar to the Rock Creek channeled by Roland Court. So GBA designed it with a base bid, which would be repairing the, the wall that was currently in near failure, as well as a bid alternate that included the riprap wall that we had repaired in 2020. Our budget was $485,000 for construction in 2023. And so when we bid it, one declined to bid, but we had two other bids. And Infrastructure Solutions, Infrastructure Solutions was a low and most responsive bid in an amount of $277,128, which is well within our budget. Because this was emergency, you know, we were really pushing them for design and they had three days to bid it. But we had set up the bids ahead of time. We got the contractors all on site, so they were ready to go. But after they bid it, they discovered that the blocks that have always been readily available weren't available. And I don't know if they're, you know, due to, you know, supply chain issues. So GBA quickly looked at a redesign and they're using the same type of block. But the blocks that, that were originally designed have a keyhole, so they connect together. But these blocks that they found do not have that. So they redesigned it so that you could drill and grout dowel bars into those. And so that was an additional $13,950. So the low bid is a total of $291,078. GB, Infrastructure Solutions is ready to go on Monday. And the conservative schedule is they will complete it in the first week of June or August. That's conservative and they think they will get it done a lot faster. But, you know, due to weather and things like that, that's conservative. As part of their construction, they want to come in off Reed's. And so we, we need to close Reed's Bridge at Johnson Drive to the south side of the bridge. And we've been working with Emily and Mission Market because that will really impact the vendors. And so the contractor is willing on Thursdays to allow one-way traffic through there so that the vendors can get in and drop off their stuff and go into the site east of Reed's. Now, the grassy area north of the walls will be fenced off, so they won't be able to get in that. But hopefully, we got a lot of things going on down there with the Johnson Drive project coming up and the market and our project. But hopefully, we can get all that done and accommodate each other. So we recommend acceptance of the low bid in the amount of $291,078 with Infrastructure Solutions.
Right, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve a resolution ratifying Emergency Expenditure with Infrastructure Solutions LLC for reconstruction at approximately 145 feet of retaining wall on the Rock Creek Channel from Reed's Road to the west in an amount not to exceed $291,078.
My second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Celia or discussion? Yes, Ken?
This is a side issue. I know that there's a safety problem that was identified at Reed's Bridge with regards to the guarding for children not getting in there. Is that something that can be addressed with this project?
We've already asked for Infrastructure Solutions to give us a bid. And because they'll put up the same fence, but they're trying to figure out how to mount it onto the bridge on both sides. So that will come back later with a cost for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But you have installed a temporary solution, right?
Yes, we have the snow fence up right now.
Nice. Just, just for one point of clarification, Mayor, if I might, because I know that, that Celia mentioned that this was budgeted in 2023. We're in 2022, but I just did want to acknowledge that there are sufficient funds in the Stormwater Utility Fund for us to advance the budget for this project into 2022.
Yes, Hillary?
Yeah, just a follow-up question from Ken. You said they're going to install the same fence. Can you remind me, is it a black-coated chain link fence? Or is it just the metal chain link?
The black-coated vinyl fence. That's what they're looking at now. We'll see. I'm assuming it'll work. They just have to figure out how to mount it.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Emily, please call for the roll.
Davis.
Aye.
Reherd.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Josie. Thomas.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Celia.
Thank you.
All right, next up is our com, comments from City Council. This is an opportunity for comments from any of our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they would like to share tonight? Yeah, Debbie?
I just want to say, we had an incident last week at the Smoothie King at the end of my street at Johnson Drive in Riggs. And the police responded and we had some of the newer officers there as well. And I just want to tell you how proud I am of this police force. There were two employees that got in a fight in the parking lot and they were cursing and screaming and punching each other. And the police were so professional and the kids were yelling at the police. And some of these kids were underage, so their parents had to show up. And the police were just trying very nicely and professionally to calm them. They were very rude to the police. And Dan and I had a conversation going back and forth by email about what the police have to tolerate and what they go through. And I just want to commend this police force because I had a response back right away and they did an amazing job. They were calm, professional. Took three of them to get one kid in the backseat. He was so rude. Anyway, the police go through a lot and I am so proud of this force. We have the best. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. Ben?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to mention, I had another opportunity to see one of our newer officers at work at Target a few days back. Was first on the scene for helping somebody who had had a medical emergency and was just glad to see a new face there. And, and, you know, getting right into the, to the swing of things and helping out folks in our community when they need it. A couple of other things I wanted to mention. Surely, most of you have seen by now that KDOT was out there and patched up some of the washboarding on Shawnee Mission Parkway, which for those of us that, you know, live really close to that as a, as a godsend, that's been a long time coming and kind of a surprise to see it really. But, and last but not least, right behind my house, if you haven't noticed, the Mission Bowl project is well underway. Finally, you know, daily construction with quite a few folks out there and happy to see that underway.
Great, thank you. Ken?
I have two items. First of all, I want to say kudos to Public Works and for Miles Escavation, who have done Yeoman's job on 62nd Street and have really completed most of the work, including driveways and, and they're, they're working on the landscaping. I believe that the sodding will take place later in the year. And then there's a final two-inch layer that's going to be put on. And they've done a marvelous job and the residents and homeowners are very pleased with that project. So kudos to you and to your staff. The second item is an item for future discussion. I noticed that with Casey's Convenience Store coming into being, one of the things that they're doing is increasing the sale of tobacco products in our community. And I've always been opposed to increasing tobacco product sales in Mission. And I would like to have at some point in time a council discussion on that issue and see if there are some options that we can entertain for limiting the number of businesses that are opening that either sell vape products or tobacco products in Mission. Thank you.
Any other comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees in Mission. First up is councilmembers Kring and Thomas for the Sustainability Commission.
All right. So I'll, I'll talk- So I'll tackle a few sustainability commission specific things. First, Terry Ba has created a handful of fantastic recycling videos, which what can't Terry do, right? And they are on YouTube and I know Emily would be happy to share them with everyone and we promised we would share it with the group. They're instructional and teach people what to do and what not to do and all the lovely things. Also, Terry is working on, well, the entire group, but Terry specifically is working on the environmental fair, which will be coming up in September. I apologize the dates leaving me at the moment, but I will 15th, and it is here at the PAL in conjunction with, I think, seven or eight different Northeast Johnson County cities. There'll be like 90 vendors or sponsorship opportunities if anybody in the group is interested. I think just a booster sponsor starts at $50 anywhere and you can sponsor up to $1,000 or more, I'm sure. And so if anyone's interested in doing that, I know the group would appreciate that. And then I will just touch on our Climate Action Task Force, although Emily might have more highlights later, I'm not sure. But we have been working, we've had three meetings now, and we have worked through all of the Climate Action KC municipal platforms. And essentially Emily has the spreadsheet, so she says that I am just dying to see. And apparently she lays out in a matrix, you know, what, what mission's already done, what has potential, and what's kind of out of the question. And then breaks it out into one, three, and five year goals. And so we're really just at the point of, you know, getting through all those items and figuring out what goes in one, three, and five. That's really our next step. So we're making a lot of progress and it's gone even better than I anticipated. And let us know if you have any thoughts or questions and we should have some recommendations for this budget cycle soon. Thanks.
I had a very quick glance at a large piece of paper that appeared to be said spreadsheet.
Solly got to see it, Emily, come on.
Not in detail, just that it exists and is in the works. So I'm excited to see that too. Yeah, Debbie, did you have anything to add?
I do. I sit on the Johnson County Solid Waste Commission and I did this presentation, it's just a brief one, at our Sustainability Commission meeting last month. Excuse me, it was this month. Anyway, there's a company called Adams Cable Equipment. And Adams Cable Equipment is one of 20 companies of its kind in North America. They're located in Lenexa, Kansas. They recycle, refurbish, and resell electronic equipment from computers to iPhones to a whole array of electronic equipment. They are certified in identifying, extrapolating, and preserving sensitive data during the recycling process. And currently I am working with the owner to set up a tour of the facility for the Sustainability Commission members. Was really intriguing.
Great, thank you, Debbie.
And I misspoke. The environmental fair is the 17th.
Uh oh, okay. Thank you. Next up would be councilmembers Loudon and Reherd for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
Yeah, believe it or not, we have not had a PRT meeting yet. It's this coming Monday. So I'm sure I will come back with a full report of lively conversation from the PRT meeting. I know we'll probably talk further about, you know, how they're going to kind of campaign for the sales tax that we approved tonight to move forward. On ballot language, saw a lot of your lovely faces at the ribbon cutting for the tennis courts, so that was good. Finally, an official opening of those, so please go and enjoy. Anything else for the missing perkways that we haven't met about? I think that's it. So thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I share something with Mary as the liaison?
Sure.
So she can liaise to the committee. So I was at the Ali Summit Pool and Splash Pad. Last week, I already told Lauren, Solly this, but they had this great sign right in front of the splash pad that said paid for by blah, 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 sales tax. And so it's advertised really big. Everybody that comes there, you know, and maybe I'm just the only nerd there that noticed it and took pictures and sent it to the, you know. But I just thought that was a really great idea to advertise where tax dollars are going. I know we've done a great job with that with paving the way, but I'd love to see us even get permanent signs at structures as we build out.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thanks, Hillary.
Great, thank you. Next up, we'll hear from Councilmember Boltinghouse on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Yeah, really quick update. We met last Wednesday for the latest iteration of this group and they just always do a really good job of giving everything a fair shake on a story idea, you know, really talking it through, adjudicating it, determining if it's a good fit or not. I'd say the combined institutional knowledge in the room exceeds several decades, so it's probably the entire lifespan of our city. So it's really nice to know with everybody and their, you know, their background and their history. We're in between issues right now. The first four members of council have their profiles in this most recent one. The remaining four of us will have ours in the upcoming issues. So if you haven't turned those in to Laura, hopefully you have by now. That's something to look out for.
So. Everybody met the deadline.
Yep, that's my update.
Great. And next up, we have Councilmember Josie with our Fall and Winter Heavy Committee of the Family Adoption Committee. Anything?
And in fact, we have not met since the last governing body meeting, but I did want to just emphasize Councilmember Thomas's comments about the Climate Action Task Force. Perhaps we ought to throw them on the reports list here as long as we keep going. But it's extremely lively discussion and I've been pleasantly surprised at just how excited and optimistic I am coming out of those meetings with regards to the potential to make some real impact. So a very, very exciting task force and I'm glad to be a part of it.
Great, thank you so much. Next up, we have our mayor's report. I do not have any appointments or other items to report this evening. Just actually one thing to note, and I might steal Laura's thunder on this, I'm not sure, the Mission Business District does have two events this weekend. So Saturday is the sidewalk sale and Sunday is a pub crawl, which is a fundraiser for, I believe, Unleashed, that is a pub crawl through, I think, four, four Mission businesses. And I think there are some Father's Day deals associated with that since Sunday is Father's Day. But Laura, do you have any items you'd like to share?
I have just a couple of things.
Just a reminder that next Wednesday we'll have our first budget work session and then I think we'll, based on what I anticipate the conversation to be next week, I expect that we will have one on the 29th of June as well. I'm not going to, we'll spend a lot of time on this next week. You may have noticed in the interim financial reports that we saw a very dramatic decline in use tax revenues for this month as the result of a refund that was issued for distributions we received in 2014, 2015, and 2016. We're currently, we've reached out to the Department of Revenue just to understand. I don't think there's any hope that we're going to get any of those dollars back, but really an understanding of that process and particularly the notification. Six or eight years down the road, it's difficult for us to plan. We estimate probably a loss of, a refund of revenues somewhere in the neighborhood of about $300,000. So has some serious impacts, obviously in our budget in today's world. So maybe it was a good thing we are a little late getting started in the budget process. So we'll go into it with the best information we have. I just wanted to, again, this group doesn't need reminding, but the eighth season of the market is off to a great start. I think Emily and Kate and Carrie must have, I don't know, worked some kind of magic to get sunny, beautiful weather in between all of the rain that we've had. So I encourage everybody to come down again tomorrow evening. As Celia mentioned, there will be some impacts with the Rock Creek Channel improvements, but I know that they're working very closely to try to minimize those and keep the experience as positive as we possibly can. Thanks to everybody who came out for the tennis court opening. Excited to see that and watch people use that. We'll be having now with the contract approval with Sands Construction, we have a pre-construction meeting with them scheduled for next week. And then we'll be able to provide some additional information about the potential groundbreaking for the improvements at Mohawk Park. The M-FAC is in full swing. This is the kind of weather that we love. It's great for revenues at the outdoor pool. So in that, in that regard, that we, we hope it continues. You may have seen a notice earlier this week that the indoor aquatics were closed. That was due to a staffing issue. I think we're not immune to the staffing issues that you're hearing on almost every evening when I turn on the news anyway. We hope those to be minimal throughout the season and we'll do our best to accommodate those and make that M-FAC available for any patrons who came to this facility to swim. And I think, unless I've missed anything from a staff perspective, I think that's it this evening.
Debbie? Do we have any updates on the potential for acquisition of that heart in the marketplace?
We are currently bidding.
Are you?
Yes. So the auction, the online auction for our heart at the market side, the online auction closes Friday at noon. And so I actually had a, reached out to the artist to let him know, someone is bidding against us. And he didn't, if he knows who it is, he didn't spill the beans and when I spoke with him. But he's excited for that and the mayor and I will be attending an event, the kind of the culminating event where they'll do the live auction of seven or eight hearts on Friday evening. So hopefully we'll be able to report, report back. We're being stealthy in our bidding, but somebody's out there watching.
Thank you.
Yes, if so, please name yourself and email the city.
Save me the time.
All right, next would be executive session. We no longer have a need for an executive session this evening. So before we adjourn tonight, I just wanted to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, everybody in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.